Again, I would like to welcome you to the meeting of the board of supervisors to order. The president is very privileged to have Governor Alan Gray here, who is with the Law and Presbyterian Church. He will give our invitation, after which, please stand by us with the token of me. So, Mr. Gray.
May you declare with me. Lord God, we praise you as our loving Father, and pray that you would give us the faith to accept that grace, that we might be your true children, your sons and daughters, and to love one another with the love that you give to us. We pray in these days of deep divisions in our nation that peace might overcome violence, that the spirit of forgiveness would overpower vengeance, a spirit of reconciliation would defeat powers of division, that selflessness would replace self-interest, and hope overcome despair, love overcome hate, and may all experience the bold generosity of your eternal love. We pray, we pray your blessing on this board of supervisors meeting. We thank the Lord for these leaders, and we pray you bless them and their families, and bless our community, bless our Commonwealth of Virginia. Help us, Lord, to have an attitude of humility as we serve one another in life, that we might be guided by your example of servant leadership. Give us a spirit of respect and cooperation as we seek to follow your command to honor one another above ourselves. When we lift up our fellow citizens of Smith County, we pray for your blessing in our endeavors. We pray for our colony, that you help it grow and help us to foster and grow good jobs. We thank you for our small business owners, for our large employers, for all who work hard every day to put food on the table. Help us to flourish economically and to make wise economic decisions for the common good. Make us compassionate toward those who are less fortunate and all those who suffer, Lord. Help us to help them in ways that are constructive. Help us to teach our children well, and we lift up our schools, students, parents, teachers, administrators. Give them perseverance and creativity to meet the challenges of online learning. We give wisdom to all who are guiding decisions about when to start back with in-person instruction. Bless our first responders, Lord, someone who are here tonight, just bless them, watch over them. We pray for our county employees, for frontline medical personnel, just keep all of them safe, and bless their healing work, their works of peace. Bless our churches, that they might be strengthened to serve and love others selflessly. Lord, we pray against the coronavirus, that you would diminish its impact on our lives. We pray for all who are presently sick, and you might bring healing. We pray for more effective treatment, for the creation of an effective vaccine. And we pray, though, that you may use even these challenging and hard times to drive us to our knees and draw us closer to you and to one another, so that we can draw strength and encouragement to work together, so that we might see demonstrated right here in this place what is best and noble in each of us. Like a refinery's fire, bring us through this present trial, Lord, stronger for it. And give us courage to always do the right and godly thing, and the strength and self-sacrifice required to carry it out. We make this prayer not for our glory but yours, that your will be done, your kingdom come, in the name of the Father, and Jesus the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from previous meetings. We have two different meetings that we will approve separately. First are the minutes for August the 11th, 2020, that before the board for your review. Any comments? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second, on favor. The motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the minutes for August the 27th, 2020. Again, are there any corrections or comments? Thank you, Maska. We have a motion to approve a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, on favor. Okay, we have four I's and one abstention. The motion passes. Our next one will have the financial report from Lisa Richardson.
Madam Chairman, this afternoon, this is a holiday meeting, and we have not received financial reports from the Fed or FISA. I do have a couple of revenue summaries and expenditures to review. I don't have any information as far as bank balances and that type of information. You should have in front of you there a revenue summary for July 1 through September 8, 2020. It lists Fund One on the first page, and it goes, it shows my separate funds. If you click to page six, there's a final total. It was budgeted, we should have a revenue budgeted for this fiscal year of $94,293,220. So far, we've collected, the current amount was $8,795,832 in real assets. The year-to-date amount collected is $13,993,552.50, leaving an uncollected balance of $80,215,779.50, which is 85% of our budget. The next page you have is the expenditure summary, and it is broken down the same way. It's the amount of the kids that list some ones for the traditional fund thereafter. When you get to the final page, page five, again, it would present expenditures of $90,293,220. We have current expenditures of $7,198,364,179.10. The year-to-date expenditure is $7,915,373.59, leaving a remaining unspent balance of $86,293,958.41, which is 9.59% of our budgeted expenditures. We should have an additional report there, the AP comparison for September 2020 as it relates to September of 2019, broken down by fund, by departments. The total for September 2020 spent was $1,364,678.42. September of 2019 was $1,354,901.95, so we're pretty much on track, the same place we were this time last September. It's got a $10,000,000 difference.
Good question.
And unfortunately, that's all I have, and I can't.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. We will move on to the agenda, next to the payment of invoices, which is on the additional agenda. Under the General County, there's another title, I'm going to read these separately, and we'll do one vote to approve each of the items combined. Under accounts payable, $1,647,784.22, payroll, $730,000. Adder draft, World Development, $15,515,000. Utilities, miscellaneous, $30,000. County administration fund, $5,000. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve a second. Motion in a second, on favor. Motion passes unanimously. Under social services, we have an appropriation of $445,000. Do we have a motion to approve? A second. On favor. Under the schools operating, we have a total of $353,000. A motion to approve? On favor. Under the EDA fund, we have $36,970. Do we have a second? On favor. Under the Sheriff's Department fund, $3,864,72. Motion in a second, on favor. Under the Recovery Court fund, $332,80. Motion is second, on favor. And finally, under the Care Senate fund, we have $966,184. A motion in the second. On favor. That concludes our proof of disbarment. Next, an agenda is Citizens' Time. Okay, and now we're going to sign up to speak, seeing who wishes to speak during Citizens' Time. At this time, we will call Citizens' Time. Under New Business, we have a presentation today. I think Dr. Karen Shelton, she's the director of Mount Rogers Health District. Welcome, Dr. Shelton.
Thank you very much for having me. Were you able to get the, okay, great, yeah, the present poster. Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for having me. It's been a trying time with the health department, and as you know, we've been totally covered in COVID pandemic response. So hopefully you received this one-page summary. Did you have that in your packet? It talked a little bit about pandemics. It may look a slightly differently. It's not available, just keep copying. Okay, very good. And so, just wanted to go over a little bit about, as you know, Smith County, as has Southwest Virginia, Virginia, the nation, as well as the whole world, has been in the COVID pandemic since February. And certainly, the health department has worked daily since February in response to this pandemic. This one-page article outlines a little bit about some of the numbers for community transmission, as well as some specific numbers for Smith County. Toward the bottom, you'll see that Smith County had its first positive case on March the 30th. We haven't looked back. Since that time, we had a very slow start, with 13 cases in April and 15 cases in May. June, it was not too bad at 36, it did begin to pick up, but we did have 107 cases in July. And in August, we've had more cases than we had all previously combined at 273. 61% of all of Smith County's cases have come during the month of August. So we have a lot going on. And details change daily. As you can see, these are details when we had the Smithus report to you last week. They've changed even since then. But Smith County today had 331 cases total thus far, with 29 hospitalizations and five deaths. The state has approximately a 7.7% hospitalization rate for all cases, with a death rate of approximately 2%. Mount Rogers Health District as a whole has had approximately 8.6 hospitalization rates for our cases and a 3.3% death rate for our cases. Smith County is close with, is closer to that in hospitalizations. It's 8.7% of all cases have been hospitalized, but only 1.5% of cases have passed away. Certainly, each one of these deaths has been tragic of its own. Our pandemic, she looks differently. Let's see, I have this focus. When we talk about how do we diagnose these cases, we rely heavily on testing. Is that pointed up here or back there? Okay, yeah. We look at testing sites. We address since Smith County to have several options for testing sites. Certainly, Ballard Health has divided the testing site with the Smith County Hospital. The health department also has a testing site, as well as the Saltville Clinic has a testing site. Rapid test sites include one of our, at least one of our local pediatrician's offices, if not more, along with the Saltville Clinic have rapid testing sites as well. Certainly, our neighboring Washington County has similar venues. Wilt County actually has probably fewer venues than that, but Smith County does have good testing opportunities here. Uh-huh, turn it on. Okay. Oh, okay. All right, we'll go ahead, turn it up. So, thank you. So, we do have, we do have testing at our local Smith County Health Department every Monday, Thursday, and Friday. We do ask that people call for an appointment for that, mainly just so we can get all your information over the phone, so that when you come, you literally stay in your car, we can swab your nose and you drive away. We don't have any paperwork involved with that. We do test people who are symptomatic, or if you have been a contact to a case, or if you're concerned that you've been a contact to a case, we can test you. When we look at the metrics of how this is evolving throughout our community, that doesn't even change since the time of this printing last week. Southwest Virginia is in a time of sustained transmissibility. We've had a lot of cases in Southwest Virginia. We have divided Southwest Virginia into near and far. We're far Southwest Virginia, along with the Mount Rogers Health Districts, along with Elwin and Wisco and Cumberland Plateau Health Districts to our left. We now have a higher transmission rate than that chart indicates. I would tell you just in our community, the trends that we're seeing, and especially in Smith County, we have had, we thought we had a lot of cases, and then the summer came. And as the summer came, a lot more cases. People traveled, people were out and about, actually, people go to the next parties. This slide kind of helps us to see what happened over the course of time, and this is thanks to Ballard Health, they took together some great graphics. So we see as Virginia kind of closed down, and we stayed home, we had very few cases. Some of our earliest cases in Smith County were due to travelers, and then we had some healthcare workers. And then it was a little bit quiet for a time, but then as things picked up, again, we didn't have that many cases in April and May, but as things picked up, people, the stay-at-home labor was lifted. We did have a face mask order placed, but not many people were very compliant with that. And so, as we got out and about more, and we're using our protection, we noticed an increase of cases. This was conjoined by Tennessee having an earlier opening than we did. And Tennessee started to see a great increase of their cases. They opened the beginning of May. It took about six to eight weeks for Tennessee to really see that rise locally in northeast Tennessee, but we've seen a direct spilling of that into Bristol, Washington County, and Smith County most wholeheartedly. And you could see some margin of numbers there toward the beginning of July. And then even as Virginia stayed home or over lifted, and people were out and about more, we saw more cases locally. These number of cases has to do with the whole 21-county footprint of Ballard, so that does include Tennessee cases as well. So as people started to travel over the summer, we did have several vacation travelers, went to some of the hotspots and came back and gave it to their family and friends as well. So we had a real increase of our cases through travel, just through people being out and about and that sort of thing. We have had it get into some churches and to spread the data. We have also had, most recently, we do notice that when we see an increase in our community, unfortunately, it can then get into our long-term care facilities, and that is really our most vulnerable population. We do expect to see an increase in hospitalizations and deaths when it gets into our long-term care facilities. Gaylax went through a peak much earlier than we did throughout May and June, and had a lot of results in hospitalizations and deaths resulting from long-term care facilities. What happens is it just gets into the community and people get it, including healthcare workers. They work, the people in the facility get it, they have a large number of cases. Some are asymptomatic, and some have more symptoms, and again, unfortunately, deaths are associated with long-term care facility outbreaks. It then gets kind of back into the rest of the healthcare workers, and then projects back into their families. So we see it really coming, spreading throughout the community in that way. So whenever we have cases that are positive, we do work with any business that they work with. We talk with the businesses. So when someone is positive for a case, we do a case investigation. We talk with that person, we find out when did their symptoms start? We want to find out whom have they been in contact with, whether they've been contagious? And we also try to find out whether they have worked in any possible contacts at work that they could have been. We always get permission of the patient to talk with other people, and then we work with businesses to make sure that they have best practices in place, safety practices for coworkers. We work closely with the school system. We have been even before schools have been in place, but even as they're beginning to get into, you know, we're virtual right now, but we still have teachers in school. And so as they begin to get back into school, and as we look toward them coming back in person at some point, we do work closely with those school systems. We have other school systems around the district who have had in-person school already, and we work with them closely as well. So as we work with these systems, we work with different businesses and any facility, including long-term care facilities where we have an outbreak, we do work with them quite extensively as well. We could see what else is, here's the five, six, seven. This looks at the Mount Rogers Health District in general. We, like I said, we had a slow start, an early peak in the Gaylax, racing, and Taylor County communities, that kind of backed again, and then we've had an increase again just since the beginning, middle of July. It's been pretty much nonstop throughout. And again, especially in Bristol, Washington, and Smith, and now we're having an increase in Wilt County as well. The Gaylax has finally slowed down, thanks for them. And this looks at Smith County, this next slide looks at Smith County specifically, as we had kind of talked about, the story started, and then the kind of increase that we've had, you can see over the last month. So we work, as we, there are some pandemic metrics which kind of go into this, and which we have worked with your school systems, work there extensively, and Mr. Avery sees these as well. But this looks at some local metrics as to what goes into making a locality have a sustained transmission. Basically, they put on the, in this number of cases. The more cases you have, it drives all of these other things. So you can see Smith County has had a great increase of cases over the last month. You can see the next one, our percent positivity, that has to do with what percent of tests that you do are positive. Right now, Smith County, that one shows a 9.3, it's probably gone up from there. But generally speaking, whenever you have more cases, your positivity goes up, because you've got more people turning positive. So it has to do, the next, it has to do with outbreaks. And again, as we have more cases in the community, we have outbreaks, and outbreaks is through more people within us, within an area, and that can include businesses as well as healthcare facilities. And then the last one has to do with healthcare workers. And you can see we've had some increase in healthcare workers lately. So this does drive our metrics as far as how prevalent it is in our community and how likely you are to get it just by being out and about. This has to do with monitoring. When is Smith County projected to peak? When are we projected to have a relief of this, of this sustained transmission? And the monitoring always comes with different options, and this has to do with how well our community does. How, as the pastor said, how well do we look out for each other? How tough are we? How are we looking out for our neighbor? How well do we wear face masks, stay home when we're sick? Wash our hands, clean all the surfaces around us? How well are we at social mitigation to help keep this from transmitting to the next people? And if we do it really well, our peak looks like it will be some late in the end of October. Again, a lot of people predict that this Labor Day having just occurred will have a spike from that. Some people say two weeks. We, again, we traditionally see more of a six to, more of a four to six week time thing for those spikes to occur, which does put us around mid-October. And so, if we don't do anything and just let it run relentless, we have the projection to have many tens of cases every day. We do know that, you know, for this disease to abate at this point, there's no containing it. There is just throwing the spread. And part of what we work toward is spreading the spread, so that when people do get sick, and the majority of people, you can look here and just see, you know, with the, again, less than 10% of our population being hospitalized, nine out of 10 people that get this have a mild to moderate illness. Most people don't have that bottom in effect, but we know that the elderly do. If we're over the age of 70 and get COVID, in our district, there have been 30% of all those over age 70 hospitalized, and 17% of all those over age 70 have passed away. If you're younger, in your twenties, I think, actually, from the age of 20 to 49, only 2% were even hospitalized, and less than 1% died. So it does have a different impact, and for our children, less than 1% hospitalized, something for new deaths. So as we look at how we interact and what can be done, we look at these curves and see how we can help each other. And I had a train about words here, but you just went right out my words. So, we'll go ahead to the next slide, please. One of the things that can be done, if you go back around, there's an app called COVIDwise, and you can put it on your phone. A lot of people get concerned that people are tracking them, but it is not a tracking device. So there's a Bluetooth enabled thing that if you have it and other people around you have this app, that they can tell if you have been, if you turn positive, you activate the code, and anyone who has been within you, within six feet for more than 15 minutes during your contagious period will then get a notice that they may have been exposed to COVID. So it's been very much utilized in a lot of our universities for helping with that. We encourage any Henry to have it for their students and the general population. People can choose if they want to use it or not. It's certainly, the more people that use it, the more, the more helpful it is to alert people. Next slide, please. We also look toward our face-based communities. We know that this is a difficult time, and we encourage our face-based communities to continue gathering. We just want them to do it smartly, you know, with the face mask, and the social distancing, and the cleaning, and the hand sanitation, and we have talked with many of those, and many have been very helpful with that. So there are some tools for businesses. We're not necessarily going to talk a little bit more about businesses or not, but there are tools for business communities on the Virginia Department of Health website. Also, the Department of Labor and Industry has tools for businesses, kind of best practice. How do I protect my office in my day? How do I protect, I mean, my staff in my office every day? What are the best business practices that we can use? You are all doing great, you're wearing a mask, you're not socially distanced, but you at least wear a mask. And so, you know, those things are very helpful, you know, use the hand sanitizer since we come in, you have a screening coming in, so those are all great practices, so that's very good. But it does talk about different things that you can do within a business to make it safer. So the things that we have are not rapid science, like I said, our job is doing, even doing the next parties. Our job has been to spread the spread of disease. There's no stopping it at this point. We want to make sure that the people who do get very sick, that we have hospital capacity for that. And Mr. Tyler will talk a little bit about that, hospital capacity. But what we have been able to do successfully thus far is keep the number slowly growing up, but we have room in our hospital for all the sick people, and not just our COVID-sick people, but all the people who have illnesses that are not COVID. People with heart attacks, or cancer, or diabetes still need hospital care. People still need surgeries. And so we have to maintain some capacity in the hospitals for them to have that. So case investigation and contact tracing and vigilance, we've been able to keep the slow spread enough that we can have the hospital capacity. We also have been, over time, you know, in the last, in the few months that we had that was a little slower in Southwest, we were able to gain a lot more PPE, a lot more protection for our healthcare providers, and even for other people, first responders, to have that. We have also been able to have, are some treatments now available. People in other, other countries have experienced hand treatments, and we have deferred that labor as far as knowing if a person is very sick in the hospital, how can we save that life? So that's been very instructive. And we have, and so, and we're closer to a vaccine. You know, the vaccine is right around the corner, whatever that means, and we are waiting for a safe and effective vaccine to become available to us. We are looking at possibly in the late fall, certainly by the first of the year. We will make sure that the vaccine that we have is safe for people to use, and we will, you know, have more messaging regarding the vaccine when it becomes available. The vaccine will be given out in a very tiered fashion, those at highest priority, first, least vulnerable. And so we will be working with the federal and the state guidelines regarding the implementation of making vaccine available to the community. One thing that I'll remind you, though, is that flu vaccine will be of utmost importance this year. We have it available at the health department and many other venues across the, the county, so we highly encourage everyone to get the flu vaccine this year. Flu vaccine and COVID can look very similar. You may not know which one you have, and at least we'll have a flu vaccine for that, and then hopefully we'll disappear the vaccine around the corner. But to have a double respiratory illness at this point would be very, we have a lot of very dire repercussions for many of our, many of our communities, those in our community. So the things that we can do, and it sounds, you know, like the simple things that we've talked about, but you're wearing the face mask, socially distancing, washing your hands, or using hands sanitizer, staying home when you're sick, cleaning and dust affecting all your surfaces, and, you know, if you feel you have been exposed, or if you're having any symptoms, to be tested as soon as possible. The faster that we find out that someone is positive, and we can put them into isolation, find those contacts, put them into quarantine, that's how we slow and stop the spread of COVID. So I appreciate your time out today. I don't know if you let me to go over any of this today, or we'll just schedule another time for that, or?
Whatever you'd like to do, if you're prepared, where?
I don't know if we need to remember about? Um, I don't know if any of you remember about the comprehensive harm reduction program. Some of you were on the board when we talked about this, this past year. And we have a new board since we went over some of these things. Um, but as we know, in Smith County, substance use has, um, taken a toll on Smith County as it has the state of Virginia and even our country. Um, and maybe you were on the board over the last two years as we talked about what Smith County could do in a positive fashion to help the substance use, what are some of the resources that we have? The department posted with the hospital since the beginning with a community health assessment back, it's been two, three years, two years ago now we started, and work towards resources within our community about what could be done. The hospital had the grant, and then they've been able to work within the hospital and many resources there. We were also able to, um, with the support of Sherwood and many others, uh, talk about a comprehensive harm reduction program that we provide through the health department. This is a program that provides services for those who are active in their addiction, who are able to, um, gain resources that might help them around the path to recovery. Uh, through this program, we can help link people to medical care. We can help link people to behavioral health care, uh, to other community resources such as food and housing. Um, the way that we bring them in is that we do provide preneedles in exchange for their use needles. And, uh, by doing this, we're able to get many of the needles off of our streets and out of our community and disposed of in a safe and proper fashion. Um, I have, uh, one of these if y'all would like to, um, to send this around. And then we have, um, our latest outcomes from the harm reduction program. We have over 200 participants now, uh, with close to 1,500 visits. Um, we do find that, um, many of them have tested positive for hepatitis C, and that's something that we talked about when we went over the statistics for Smith County. We're able to, uh, arrange, uh, treatment for them for their hepatitis C and provide preventative services for HIV and other, and other diseases that we have such as hepatitis A and B, which our vaccine, uh, which can be helped by the vaccine. We also provide Narcan and have had, um, I believe I had seen, uh, over 58 overdose reversals with naloxone. And we've had, um, many people began on the path to recovery. So we're very thankful, uh, for this program in our community where we can help those who are, uh, in active addiction, not on their path to recovery, because you really have to meet people where they are with the things that they need at that time. Anybody have any questions about either comprehensive harm or about COVID in the community? I'd be happy to take them.
Dr. Shelton, oh, okay. Dr. Shelton, on behalf of Smith County Schools, I know we talk to you about every day. I just want to thank you for your expertise and advice because, uh, you've helped us a lot in making decisions and, and being accessible the way you are. So I know it's daily we talked about Dr. Shelton, so I want to thank you for your time and expertise and helping us out.
We're happy to help, thank you.
Dr. Schell, I have a question I've heard, uh, from one of your chats there, the one that says locality, specifically Smith County. You talked about the adaptive and the adaptive low and adaptive high, which are different curbs. All three of them appear to peak about the same time and start down. Is that relative of getting critical mass of our community?
Well, that's a good question, whether that's, I don't know if there's a magic mark. I know that when I look at the different rates of transmission throughout the district, uh, Gaylax hit 5%, and there's, kind of started going down. I don't think that's a magical number, but the state has validated, that's just what I've seen. Most of our other localities were well under 1% for the total number of population affected. Um, I think hopefully it has to do, it has kind of got the getting back to school time when people start to get in a routine, they travel less, go to home more. We don't have any spurts to go see right now, so there's no reason to really get out and about. But, you know, again, the effects of the summer and the Labor Day weekend hopefully settling down by then. And, uh, the continued work of the contact tracers and case investigators, those things kind of run their course. We're all hoping for this downward trajectory. Unfortunately, I'll notice it's right when flu starts trending up. So again, it's going to be very difficult perhaps to tell what are is going on. Um, we're hoping not to even get up to that peak, but we're trying really hard to keep going. We're having, um, you know, close to 10 cases per day right now in Smith County. And so it's 70-plus cases per week that adds up very quickly.
Well, I too have the COVIDwise app on my, on my side.
Good for you.
And in the retail sector and the healthcare, I'm, I'm kind of in contact with a lot of folks lately. And I have yet to have a notification of a positive, potential positive across, path crossing, I guess is what I was talking about. I, I just, I'd like to throw in something after the rest of the board here. Uh, I have a colleague in another state that got involved in the hepatitis C treatment, and they're pretty much bankrupted in the New York Medicaid system treating it. So this is a very serious thing that she's talking about here. We need to get in front of it as, as much as possible.
We have some good resources in our community that we've been able to work with. The Mallein-Mensis Clinic partnered with UVA for some treatment, the helpful clinic does treatment. We, uh, have a residency program down at J and H at the Bauer Hospital there that does treatment. As well as we're, prior to COVID, we were very actively on the path of getting our community partners on board. Um, COVID's taking us on a little detour. We know that many are suffering from their substance use depression and anxiety during this time. Even don't use substance use. So we know in this population, it's a particularly difficult time. But yes, thank you for your advocacy for that. And that's one thing that I think, sure, sure, and the board, when we talked about this originally, the economic impact of hepatitis C on this community, if they were asked to treat all the people that were positive, it would run many millions of dollars. So, um, we're thrilled to have, um, this program and to, to watch our rates begin to come down. Unfortunately, rates are slow coming out, so we haven't been able to see the programs. Been up and going about a year and a half now. Uh, actually, we're closing in on a two-year lag this winter, so about a year and a half. So we're anxious to see how these numbers are going to be looking for us. But thank you for that, the board.
Dr. Shelton, uh, on behalf of the board, we certainly want to thank you for making this up available to us. Um, in my district and also other people in the county, my biggest question and ask that people have had are the reporting of numbers. And I know there's a lag time, so I have some comments to say, I put it out before the meeting to say, what questions would you like to ask? And one thing was, we want to know the number of active cases rather than the total. Now, I've noticed in Wicks County, I have a board supervisor who does a great job of reporting, so I have to say, since they're in the same district, not one just district, that we're giving the same information.
So, uh, so let me tell you what to do for that. Okay. So we, uh, I think we, um, we work closely with the emergency coordinators regarding your active cases. And I think you've just had a change in your emergency coordinator, and I have not met the new one yet. Um, unfortunately, Virginia does not report active cases, and I wish that we did because I do think it does a lot for community and Gaylax for so when we had so many active versus now, and we got this high rate, but, you know, the cases have gone down, but nobody knows because they don't have...
Because every day I go to the dashboard, and of course, it's cumulative.
Yeah.
And I do know that the other information is broken down, it is available. So I think that's a big concern of citizens, like, when there's only 10 cases per day or 70 per week, I think that it helps them to get a grip on it.
Yes.
And maybe they're encouraged to take more proactive, uh, you know, measures to prevent it. So I wonder, I want to ask the board.
So the best way to go about working with the active cases and, uh, Mr. Adler, who, uh, the emergency coordinator, whoever goes about this, the way that we've worked with our, our boards in the past in several different counties, if you look at the, the total number of cases, so for Smith County, the day that was 331, uh, people are in, asked, are in isolation about 10 days. So from the time, so from the time that they've developed symptoms, their isolation is 10 days, assuming that they recover on time, some last longer. So, uh, what we have said is that your number of cases that are reported daily on the, on the website, the number of cases for the last 10 days is an approximate figure of your active cases. And you can use that as the proxy, proxy. So you take your total number of cases and you, and you take your total number of deaths, and you look at the number of cases reported in the last 10 days and, and, that didn't come out right. So if you look at the number of cases reported in the last 10 days, that is approximate for your active cases. And that's what we have told the other counties that they may use. So when you go onto the website and it has the number of places per day, if you go by 10 days, you would use that total as your number of active cases. And that's something that you can post, um, on your website if you choose to do so. When we talk about recovered cases, that's where we take the total number minus the active and the deaths, and you can look at how many have recovered.
Yes.
So that's how we would calculate that figure. And that way, we're using public information that should be reproducible for anyone who wants to do it day-to-day. But if sometimes a lag in the recording of cases has to do with, um, as they come to us, and specifically if you have an, a long-term care facility outbreak, those cases are recorded differently to us. And so it will sometimes take us a little time to get those into the site, which may shift your numbers slightly, but, um, also because those are not active in the community, but nonetheless, they are still important to the community because they are part of the community as well as all the employees as well. So using that last 10 days of cases will be approximate for you for active cases, it will be approximate.
Okay. I, I know at one point, you and I have met with the coordinator previously. He actually had a printout, now I think, did this printout come out daily?
So we have a special...
Did he even share the name?
We have a special dispensation from the Commissioner of Health for a public health emergency that allows us to communicate with one person in the county, the emergency coordinator, regarding our active cases. And so that is for the benefit of first responders and their, and their health. It is not for everyone to know.
But we would know, we would need to know the names, but we'd at least know the numbers.
You have to know the numbers from that. That does not include your nursing home numbers. That will not include your long-term care facility numbers. Uh, the, the long-term care facility is on that, but not the number of active cases we've done in that facility is not on that page. Some communities have used that as approximate as well. We report those out Monday through Friday, and Monday's result does cover Saturday and Sunday as well.
With the, um, the hospital, I guess the Southwest Virginia Medical Health, is that part similar to the nursing home?
So that's a, so the, so the residents will, will be counted on the public website with, as entries. They will not come onto your emergency coordinator sheet. Our employees are counted just as residents that reside in Smith County. If the employee of that facility resides in Wicks County, it goes on Wicks County's numbers.
Those jurisdictions were on the rise, Neil, even broke on the, on the paper recently, comparing us to Eastern Virginia, and a ratio was, you know, right there. So that's very helpful, I think, in the long forward. I give it some direction to have more, a million of information to get out to the community, so.
Yes, thank you for that. And some communities, so when we talk about Eastern Virginia, some of what the, uh, Virginia Department of Health advocates is that if a community has active transmission, they can look at some, like, some factors that they could, I'm looking for the appropriate word here, could do for their community to decrease transmission. So like in, in Eastern Virginia, when they had outbreaks, they, uh, they recognized that bars were a huge problem for them, so they closed them at midnight and made sure that people were socially distanced within those facilities. Um, some other areas with, a lot of college students, uh, went from gatherings of 250 down to gatherings of 50, and then they got a town or a city or a county ordinance. So there are things as a board of supervisors that you can do that are more regulatory for Smith County. My general feel in talking with county administration is that obviously we don't want to do anything that has an adverse economic impact. So as we look at why do we have cases in Smith County, we look at things like churches, which we've had a huge number of cases from in Smith County. And, but, you know, we, we don't regulate churches. People need religious gatherings, so that's why we say we're not going to regulate the religious gatherings. We just hope them to do it more smartly. So, um, you know, and, and, and other things of doing, people need to get out and about and do the things they need to do, they just need to do them more smartly. A young person may not have the effect of the disease, but as they spread it within the community, we have many other community members.
Well, we have a large aging population, basically.
Yes. So, and that's where the labor is. Yeah, but that's where the board of supervisors can be involved in some messaging. We do have a messaging campaign planned for the Southwest, and we would love any input that any of you have regarding messaging and media and what can we do for our community. Like I said, I don't see us cutting off the bars at midnight. I don't think that's a huge problem for Smith County. The other thing that we see is, you know, we don't regulate protests, and we know that we had a large number of protests in Smith County over the summer. And I know that a lot of communities said they didn't see any cases from the protests, but I know that we had a lot of cases related to the protest, um, not only in Smith County, but in surrounding towns. Um, and, um, we don't regulate protests and we don't regulate religious gatherings. So, you know, we, um, just advocate that they do them smartly. And so the other big thing that we see is family gatherings. You know, people have their Sunday dinners, they have their weddings, their funerals, they have their family gatherings, and we don't regulate those either. You know, we just want people to, to live their lives more smartly and, um, you know, to do what they can to stop the spread of disease.
Right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you for that, thank you, yes. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation from, um, Mr. John, John Taylor, who's vice president of the Smith County Community Hospital, Ballard Health.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. As with most organizations, things happen, and at the top, you're probably the last to know of things that are going on. And so what I would like to impress upon this board is the amount of creativity and interaction that all of us have in this county, and it's to the betterment. So when Dr. Shelton talks about working with the hospital, working with businesses and things like that, none of that would have happened if it hadn't been for a group of people looking to try and do things for the betterment of this county. So we've had the sheriff involved, obviously, uh, county administrators involved, several people were involved. And as a result of that, there are things that are occurring in Smith County that will prepare us for such things as COVID-19 or the drug problem or any of those things. So, um, I want to be able to, to start out my presentation with saying that. Nope, it doesn't want to work. Let's see, now, that's the... It's on, but it doesn't want to work. Okay, move forward, next one. Um, as far as tonight, I wanted to go over seven different types of things. Uh, first of all, it's just an, an update on the hospital. And there are three basic areas that we can go over. Uh, the financial performance, the quality metrics, and then finally, the patient satisfaction metrics. Now, I, I hear all sorts of rumors all the time, so I'm going to dispel the rumors tonight. Um, the hospital is not closing. Ballard is not going to close the hospital, and you'll understand why in just a second. We go to the next one, go on after that. Um, financially, Smith County Community Hospital for fiscal year 2020, uh, which starts for us July 1st, um, we have a profit margin of 15.7% and a budget of 4.9%. We're about 11, 11.6% greater than what was budgeted. At Francis Mary Manor, we had a margin of 3.7, um, or the, the budget margin was 3.7. We ended up with 13.7 or 11% excess in budget. You don't close a business that is contributing those dollars to the, to the overall good of the corporation. It defies business sense. Uh, one more. These are the quality metrics, and these are standard metrics which Medicare, Medicaid, uh, gather to look at to evaluate hospitals. And in that far right column, you see the 90th percentile. Uh, very few hospitals operate in that 90th percentile. There's only one measure that we are not operating in the 90th percentile, and that is CDEAD. And that is a hospital-acquired, um, infection that you can get at the hospital. Unfortunately, our rates are so low that we're talking about small numbers here. So if we're only talking about 20 or 30 potential people and one of them gets it, it'll, it'll give us a, a ugly-looking number, and that's what happened. Um, so for the entire fiscal, fiscal year, all of our quality metrics were in the 90th percentile. There's not too many hospitals that can do that. You don't close a hospital down that is performing at that level. The next, next one again. Um, this is our Center for Medicare and Medicaid webpage. Um, and this has to do with the different categories of patient satisfaction. So you have hospital performance, you have actual quality, and then how do people feel about the service that they are getting at the hospital? I handed out to you a, uh, an article which I just received today. I handed out to you an article which I just received today and these are the numbers that CMS published just recently. There's about 3,400 hospitals nationally that participate in the Medicare program and all of the ones that do get rated. And so when you look at that, they have a five-star rating. So zero, I mean, one star and rest of five star. In this country, there were only 266 of those 3,400 hospitals that were rated five-star. There's only one in Virginia and that's right here.
Congratulations.
So again, if you look at all three of those things together, you've got good financial performance that all go hand in hand. You've got exceptionally good quality and then you've got exceptionally good patient satisfaction scores all the way around. From a business perspective and from a Ballard perspective, you don't close a hospital down. I mean, this is one of your shining stars within Ballard. Now, are we making the same amount of money as a JMH or Bristol Regimes? No, we're a smaller hospital. But we, I want to impress upon you how well this hospital does and in relation to others. So are there any questions about that? The next thing, I'm going to talk a little bit about Ballard and Smith County and what we have done with COVID-19. You know, obviously we work very closely with the Health Department, but Ballard had stood up their Incident Command Center in early March of this year to start dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. We receive data reports from the Incident Command Center and I distribute those to community leaders and to Mr. Att gets those as well as Dr. Shelton and Sher Shuler and a bunch of other folks get those, that data. If you want to receive it personally, let me know through Mr. Att and I'd be glad to add your name to the distribution list if you want that information. Ballard averages about 100 COVID-19 patients at any given day in all the 21 hospitals that we have. Now, one of the things that we did in early July is that we redeployed some of our nurses to other hospitals. And there is a reason for that. Number one, for example, at Smith County, we don't have a pulmonologist here. We don't have a peritoneal cardiologist here. We don't have all those that I referred to as ologists here at this hospital, but we have, we offer very good care. We have not lost a single COVID patient that we've had in our hospital at this point in time. But the corporation wanted to redeploy our team members to other hospitals because they had availability of other specialists and especially those that deal with signs and symptoms associated with COVID-19. So pulmonology is a real big one since this is a respiratory disorder. And we did that. We did that in the beginning of August. We redeployed 12 team members. Eleven of them went to Justin Memorial and one went to Bristol. We will be recalling those team members back at the end of this month. And part of the reason for that is that we have seen the cases and as Dr. Shelton said, if you look at all of Ballard, we've kind of evened out about 100 cases. We were initially looking at the surge capacity that Dr. Shelton talked about, that normally the three different lines going up like this, and we were looking at anywhere as a lower 60 at any given day to the high of 300. Well, even with all the beds that Ballard has, 300 would have been a huge task on our resources. So we've been fortunate in that we have been able to keep about 100 in-house at any given time and successfully treat those. And so for all of that, I am very, very grateful and we'll be redeploying those back. And one of the things that we did is that we capped our inpatient census. So on the med surge, we capped it to seven patients and the reason why I came up with seven, we look at every surgery day and we have about two admissions from surgery every day, so we wanted to be able to have room for those. We wanted to be able to look at our normal admissions and discharges and how we can do things. And so we came up with that number of seven and then on our inpatient rehab unit, we have seven as well. But at the end of this month, we'll be pulling those back and to be able to potion. Good, next one. This is one of the slides that Dr. Shelton referred to and it's for all of Ballard ride, all of our primary market area. And you can see it here and obviously this information changes every day, twice a day. And I try to give those reports out to you all. But we have seen an increase in the number of cases here. So if you go to the next slide, this is kind of a rendition of what Dr. Shelton was talking about. You can see this is a spreadsheet that I personally keep, which talks about the number of cases per day. And if you go back to 10 days, you can kind of get your average number on my sign down at the bottom of the banner of the hospital. I'm going to be, I've been putting up for the past seven days. I could put the last 10 days if you want, which is, seven days seem to be like a good number. But you can see, I mean, two days ago, three days ago, we had a number of 18 cases, which is the largest single day that we've had. I think we had 14 today that were listed, so we go from there. Last of all, I've been reading a lot about the 1918 pandemic and I've come away with two kinds of things, two takeaways from it. Number one, the country survived the 1918 pandemic. We will survive the COVID-19 pandemic. Number two, the economy rebounded and disaster didn't fall upon us. So while we're going through all of this now, it's hard to see, you know, some of the forests were trees and water. But those are the two things that to me are hopeful. And to say that we as a country, we will survive this and the economy will survive. Are there any questions that you've had for me specifically?
I don't want to knock on the door, but I've got several I'd like to pose. What is an average daily census at the hospital? How many patients do you have at any given day?
But we've restricted it now. So normally we would have anywhere from 17 to 24 in-house at any given time on a 44-bed hospital. So we've restricted that artificially suppressed that right now because of staffing and redeploying our staff.
So what's the rate of transfers to one of the other hospitals?
We normally do in a month about 40 transfers in a month. That is up this month because of bed capacity. And then we're redeploying our staff. You've got to ask that for the patients. So we've had about 60 transfers this past month.
How many of those are ER visits?
Almost all the transfers come in through ER visits with the exception of a patient who is up on the floor in med surge, who starts to decompensate, that requires a cardiologist or a pulmonologist or a nephrologist or any other allergist that there may be.
Okay. And your maximum capacity for beds in the hospital is?
44. 14-bed emergency department.
44, okay. Is there anybody else have any questions for us?
Please go ahead.
With your permission. Urgent care, let's talk about that for a minute. I work in a retail pharmacy, so I hear some very unflattened things referencing the hospital. And I'll be the first to tell you, I've been your shining advocate, telling, you know, to use them. I personally used your hospital for, I had our knee replacements and I wound up in the hospital with an infection a month ago due to a cat scratch. I have nothing but glowing remarks for the staff up there. They do a wonderful job. But the main thing that I run into is, as long as we go to Oregon or Bristol, because that's where you're going to ship until anyway, which is, extends my question, how many transfers? So the urgent care, I see a lot of patients telling me, I don't have a primary care doctor. Either nobody will take them or they've been fired by one or whatever. And they wind up using the ER at an extremely high rate for primary care. So my question is on urgent care, when are we going to see those hours expanded to address some of the non-life-threatening acute care that the ER is designed for and see more of the, you know, sniffer or throat kind of thing that the patient needs to be able to receive?
So number one, let me kind of give you the answer. The urgent care is temporarily closed now because of, again, the resources and trying to marshal those resources to the best places, which is a decision by Ballard to be able to do that. The urgent care here have restricted hours and part of that, and I'm not going to make an excuse for it, I will say that my predecessor was one that actually negotiated that contract and the hours that it would be open. We are going to, when we reopen it, we are going to extend those hours. So we plan to have 10 to 8, Monday through Friday, and 10 to 6 are there Sunday, just like it is now. It will be in the hospital. We want to be able to do some renovations to part of the hospital so that urgent care has a dedicated space. And when the hospital was initially designed, they designed a visiting physician clinic. And so we have cardiology that comes from Abington. They see patients there. We have nephrology that comes. We have gastroenterology that comes. We have several different types of specialists that come to that clinic. The problem with just the physical design of it and having urgent care is that you had all these people who were compromised in some way, whether they're diabetic, whether they had heart problems, any number of things. And you don't want to intermingle those people who had the sniffers, could have strep throat, could have flu, could have COVID-19 in that same room. So we don't want to transmit any of that stuff. So one of the things that we have done or that I have done in trying to address this issue of the urgent care, I want to start off again, but I wanted to have a dedicated space that we can separate those urgent care people and extend the hours on it. Now, we're talking about anywhere between $150,000 to $200,000 to do the renovations that would be necessary. And obviously that's going to take Ballard being able to have pay for that. So we are in the process of doing the business plan. We've got the initial architectural renderings done, what needs current state, what would need to be demolished and then what the found space would be. And I would hope, and again, this is just a wild projection, that sometime around the first of the year, if all the pieces fall into place, we may be able to reopen it at that moment.
Circling back to this, sorry, anybody else have a question?
No, that just concerns me a little because we're going into flu season, so, but probably I think that release will be the first of next year. Okay.
Okay. Any questions, anybody else have a question? Not a couple more?
No, you're great, thank you.
Substance abuse program issue. To circle back to that, there's a lot of talk in the media about a proposed facility coming into one of our plazas here. And I've had people come in to me and directly tell me they're not in support of it, but we don't need that element in this community. Now, I understand their point of view, but would you, I tell them, would you feel the same if they were diabetic? Much as not. So the question I have for you and Ballard Health Extension is, is it possible for Ballard to throw their weight behind a substance abuse program to legitimize, hate to use that word, but to legitimize a program of substance abuse, medication assisted treatment program to help us reclaim a vast disenfranchised portion of our communities? Because once they get in this path, it's hard for them to come back. They face obstacles at every turn where they turn. They have to really, really work hard to succeed. Those that want to have a hard time succeeding. Combine that with the Drug Recovery Corps of the County, which is a shining success, we need to multiply that. And I think one way to pull that off is to get Ballard's credentials behind it and not have, I don't mean this in a bad way, but not have some under an entity command that may or may not be on the other end. And the underway to-
Let me kind of answer first, a little bit of personal information prior to my career as a hospital CER. I had to master some clinical psychology and at one point in time, I was a certified addiction counselor in the state of Virginia. And all the patients that I worked with, I never ever met somebody who said, you know, it's my personal goal to be a drug addict. None of them said that. And I'm not going to make excuses as to why, but there is a problem. And so one thing, and again, Dr. Shelton made reference to it, is the consortium that we pull together. And we pull together with the hospital, a group of people, a group of stakeholders in this community to try and deal with this problem. It is not something that one entity can deal with. It's something that everybody in all of the county has to deal with. And so that is what we are trying to do. With regard to treatment programs and not wanting those people in the community, I can remember when the Southland Clinic opened and that was part of the argument was, we don't want all these drug people in the community. And I was talking with Dan Haines, I said, Dan, and then you've got 30 people that you can treat, once a demographic. And he says, 28 of them are from Southland and two of them are from Marion. They're already here. Exactly, they're already here. And it's not bringing undesirable people in. It is, what are you trying to do with the people that you have who have a problem? And so with regard to treatment, Bill Rush called me and wanted my recommendation, a potential person coming in doing medication assisted treatment program. And I said, Bill, the easiest answer to that is have that physician get credentialed at the hospital. The credentialing process for any physician is long, it's arduous, it looks at every single stone and turns it over. And it is something that, you know, most doctors don't want to go through, but they have to go through. And so if you go through that amount of rigor to get credentials, you'll be pretty good. There was a group that Bill called me about about a year and a half ago and I said the same thing to him, have them go through the credentialing process. And they didn't do it. They backed out. And so I gave the same recommendation this time, have them go through the credentialing process. If there's a problem, we'll find it. And as far as Ballard Health and your part with that, your question with that is, Ballard Health is looking all the time and recently just received a rather sizable grant, just at the hospital in that grant, to try and help with substance abuse. Ballard Health has. And that grant will look to try and start programs just as you're doing. So yes, it's definitely on Ballard's radar. Are they ready to pull the plug tomorrow? No, they're not. But things are moving in the right direction with it and hopefully, when I come next year this time, I'll be able to tell you where we are in this process. You know, from an eye-looker, it feels like a motorboat in the assis. The engine's really revved up and we're going very fast. And that's the best way I can say. Havoc is being made and it's being made for the thing that I said when I first got here. We pulled together the folks at the hospital and we were able to work together and do some things that had been very good and beneficial to this community. We will continue to do. One of the things you, some of you were here when Chris McPhee did the presentation from Giles County. We want to continue to look at that and see if that's something that's viable for us.
I have one more question. I know we're here on State Hospital Hill, now for Eastern Healthcare, but there's still a gap and no-
a gap in the health coverage. I would urge you to take it back to the Ballard higher-ups to at least look at doing a practice formal health that doesn't, that would augment what's already here, not try to compete with it, because there's several people in the community that are falling through the cracks.
Well, one of the difficult things, and Dr. Shelton can probably address this a little bit, is when we start to look at recruiting physicians, we have to look at community need, and if there is a need, so how many people in this county have diabetes? Need a nephrologist, okay? And then we pull that data together. When we start talking about mental health, we have to run for state hospital. They're there. But unfortunately, all those psychiatrists add up. And when we start looking at need and being able to recruit psychiatrists into this community, there's no need because of all the psychiatrists. They've got ten in four on the books. And so that makes it very difficult to try and recruit.
Inpatient?
Correct.
What about outpatient? What about outpatient services?
It's still, it's the same type of figures. How many doctors do you have? How much need do you have? And then from that, we can recruit or we can't recruit. And it comes down to salary. And I will tell you a couple of other things that are happening. The School of Emily Henry's Health Science, they, this time next year, will start a program and they certify a licensed professional counselor in the state of Virginia. We'll meet the criteria for that. Those people will be able to bill Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance as a licensed professional counselor. That is one avenue that is going on. Personally, I think the School of Health Science of Emily Henry is such a strong economic driver to this community. As it grows, this community will continue to grow and be able to get research dollars in here in the light that we can't, that we don't have now. But there's such an opportunity here from your seats as well as my seat. I'm looking at these folks. I need this for therapists, I need artificial therapists. They haven't, they've just started their LPN, I mean RN's BSN program that they've just started now. So again, there are several numbers of businesses in this community that are doing a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Todd, thank you so much. It's been very informative and helpful, and thank you for taking the time to come and meet with us.
I'll be glad to come back anytime you want. If you want any additional information, which I did, Mr. Art, whoop, hopefully I didn't break. Your email, and I will include you on that distribution.
Please leave us a few five stars.
Yes.
As I said when I sent the email out to my team members, this is not one person. This is the whole training pulling together. You don't achieve that by one person.
Certainly good for the community.
It will happen.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the Census 2020 update, Becky Holley.
Hello, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I will not take much of your time, I just wanted to give you a little update. Thank you Lisa for inviting me. Very proud to give updates during the COVID pandemic. Currently, here in Virginia, we, and I just looked at these numbers right before we came, the crossroads changed this a little bit, but currently in Virginia, we have a overall self-response rate of about seventy percent. So Virginia has taken off really well with people self-responding online, and especially during the pandemic, I guess this was a great time for that to be offered online. Here locally in Smith County, you're at a sixty-point-seven percent Census self-response rate, which means you've either probably already saw a lot of enumerators here, or you will continue to see a lot of enumeration here. Still, the sugar growth area is definitely an area to, you know, to be concerned about. The Census rates there are still very low. And unfortunately, during the pandemic, there's not been a whole lot, really, there's not been a whole lot of outreach that, you know, other than emails, a lot of social media, things like that, that has been done. Any kind of events or anything like that that we had scheduled or going to happen, you know, a lot of those were, as you all know, pretty much stopped. So anything that you all can think of in that area, there's one of the things that the Census Bureau is doing currently is called a mobile questionnaire assistance program, it's the MQA program. So in Southwest Virginia, we definitely, which, you know, they've been pretty good compared to, you know, some of the counties. We have three counties in Southwest Virginia that we've been working really, really hard with, cost thirty percent, even as two weeks ago was still at thirty-nine percent. So, you know, y'all, you've done really well, again, the sugar growth area. But we do have an opportunity for MQA staff to still go out into the community. It does look a lot different. I was talking to Lisa today, you know, giving them space and kind of putting them in an office that ain't going to help us any in the area because, you know, we need to be where people are. So some of the suggestions for making MQA effective with a little bit of time that we have left is if you have meal pickups within your county at the schools, that's a great place for someone to come in and sit outside. You know, it's still keeping them some distance away. The mobile questionnaire assistance program, what that is basically is, you've got someone there at the table providing information, but folks can use their own devices in order to self-respond, no one can help them do that. If something happens, they don't have a device, they can also just give the information to the MQA staff that is there, they can put it into the system. And even if we're in an area to where cell service or internet is non-option, our staff can put that into their phones or tablets that they have, and whenever they come back out once they hit service, all the information will update. So again, the schools is a great place if you have some opportunity there. Grocery stores, you know, people are still going to the grocery store. The thing is, and I do know for a fact, for city, because I've worked with a lot of grocery stores throughout, Southwest Virginia has to stop any kind of sidewalk, you know, folks setting up. And, you know, you can understand why that they do that. So that's kind of restricting us a little bit. But if you all know someone that'll let you come and do that, that's a great place. The health department in certain areas, I'd like you to come and set up. We've ran into some HIPAA things there. So we've really ran into a lot of tough places to get information out to. So if you all have suggestions, you know, we still got some time, and we'd love to be here in the community doing something. Well, Lisa, a few yard times today to get out, I have a few bottles to get out, and a few flyers left. Do you have questions?
I was going to tell you, Mr. Griffin is over our meal distributions that we do in the school system.
Okay.
So if you want to ask, speak to him, he can, he can, we deliver our meals to most of our homes, the people who request it.
Okay, so you all are delivering meals?
We are.
Wow, so that'd be really good. Is your school buses doing that? Is that a certain?
Yes, that's your all.
See, and that would be really nice. If we could get, you know, flyers into those boxes, you know, that would be a really good thing. You know, another thing, just having kids that are doing new online thing right now, and I have six kids at home of all grades, and I'm thinking, my kids go back to school on St. and Brownings every Saturday. You know, of course, you know, just trying to teach is such a big deal. But just maybe talking to some of our teachers, I know what they're doing, social study things right now, and they're really struggling, picking up some ideas, you know. I think we've done good citizenship now for about two weeks. But, you know, one of the suggestions I had is, you know, how you can talk a little bit about the census, because, you know, I see a lot of parents running around in the background. And that may be a good way to pitch their attention.
Becky, when is the cutoff date?
When? They're not really said officially, okay? But we went out a few months ago, is that the census was extended out through October thirty-first, okay? That doesn't mean that you may see all of us here, as of right now, we are. However, though, I do know for a fact that the MQA events that I have scheduled will go through the end of this month. However, we need, if we're going to do something, we need to be very active really quickly.
We still have a lot of ground to cover then, don't we?
A lot.
I'm curious if I can-
Sure.
See, if we stay at sixty-seven, maybe we make it to seventy, seventy-five percent response rate, what happens to the other twenty-five percent? Are there assumptions? Do you know what, I'm sure there's four of yours out, but what do we lose out on?
Well, there's several things. You know, well, we never, well, look at everything. Look at, I hope we'll talk about, are you the measured coordinate?
No.
Oh, yeah? Okay, can I be sure? Well, any kind of funds, anything you've got coming here, your roads, your education, healthcare programs, your WIC programs, housing. I know there's some low-income housing in Smith County right now, and a lot of people do come here. I was just told a couple of weeks ago by someone that gets out bachelors, they come here to get them with the intentions to go back, but they don't ever go back. Okay, so you all are keeping a lot of population that's not counted. And every dollar that comes into your community will be based on census.
So Lisa thought that seventy-five percent, and we wouldn't show a twenty-five percent of population?
Well, we're sending enumerations. About four weeks ago, there's about eleven thousand enumerators that hit the field in the United States. They are out, they've actually came to my home, you know, I have a new home, I was real shocked that they even showed up. And I showed up, they were just being very happy to have an address. So, but they did show up, they are there. Folks are out and about. People do need to be, you know, on a road, which we try to do a lot of that, even, you know, even like my personal stuff or whatever, I try to put information out, you know, if you see an enumerator coming to your house, you know, there's time to verify them, there's time to know if they're true federal workers. We had an incident over in Bacana County, where two gentlemen went up to a certain location and tried to get into people's houses. They actually did go into a couple out buildings. And eventually, when they got to, whenever a real enumerator got to off the third house, that person said the same story and called the law on them. So being able to identify census workers is extremely important. There is information, which I shared before, I can share again with you, of how to identify an enumerator. They can actually go in and put in their name, and it'll give all their information. Lots of folks just don't answer the doors, I hear it all the time. I mean, I've even had relatives, and, you know, I've been at this for two years, and relatives, oh, they didn't answer my door. And I'm like, what? I have to show him to do this on my end. So if you all have some opportunities, I'm all game, and, you know, again, it's hard to get in the doors, I can send hundreds and hundreds of emails out, and sometimes, you know, never get a response. So if y'all have things that you all want to do, let's get those together. I will do it for you tomorrow, I will reach out, we'll go ahead and do that, anything you can think of that we can do to get out into, you know, out into trouble. Also, you know, one of their, the MQA manager and I work really, really close together. If you'll set something up, I reached out to her today, and we'll make sure someone is there. So, you know, any ideas that you all can come up with? You know, some of the things, which, not all of our libraries are relaxed, some of them are, some of them aren't, but they have those drop-off and pickup dates, and we've been trying to catch people with those, you know, because people are doing that. Your food banks here locally, that's a good place to catch people, there's more people going to food banks now than I've ever did before. You know, even with my kids at home, I mean, I could pick up those, which we have to go pick those up in Washington County, but I actually went to that and picked them up. It is remarkable, I mean, you know, I even, the first week of school, I was like, oh, everybody, thank this school. You know, because it is a big deal for a parent to have to stop in the middle of the day, and pick, you know, what time they're actually, happen to be the teacher too, so it is a very big deal.
How many enumerators coming?
Sure.
How many enumerators do you think you'll have here in Smith County? Do you have one now, or?
Yeah, they don't actually tell me that. I could ask questions to find out. I do know that, you know, there were a bunch deployed in Southwest Virginia. Unfortunately, they seem to know where the numbers are the worst. And right now, in Southwest Virginia, we're talking Roanoke, Tassau County, Lee County, and Wise County, and Bacana County are the ones who are struggling the worst. You know, but you have to look, you know, you can, you know, drive across the mountain and still have cell service or internet or something here. Last week when it was in that spot in Bacana County, we went down, my business did to help go clean it up, there was absolutely no cell service, no internet, no anywhere, and nothing. So they're really struggling. So I can ask to see how many we have. I can tell you they're still calling people. You know, people think, you know, we're, you know, we're this far out, you know, they wouldn't be calling people, but they are. I know people who, you know, have just applied, you have to look at all the recruiting that we've done, folks have moved on, you know. And then the MQA program that we had that we were hiring folks for, when we went to start this second March, COVID happened, and really, until probably, three weeks ago, we had been in our homes working since March. So anything you all can think of?
I'll look, question what Ms. Rutz asked. If we stay at the seventy-five percent, you don't contact anyone, they don't contact you, that is our number, is that correct? We don't, they don't factor in any unknowns into that number?
They will not.
Okay.
No, but keep in mind that enumerators will be here for quite some time. And now afterwards, you've still got some things that goes on with the Census Bureau. You've got post-numeration, okay? So even after all these enumerators are out there, you've still got people who will go back trying to fill in those holes. So in other words, if they see just a magnificent drop in twenty-twenty, and then they see twenty-ten numbers, and you know, those just, whatever, you've got post-numeration that's going in to try to clear those up. You know, you've got, there'll be new surveys coming out, so you know, you'll have those numbers in. But yeah, I mean, this count is the count, and it affects everything.
Is there a way you could get us some stuff that we could put on our Facebook and our website?
Oh, absolutely.
Kind of a recognizing numerator, or anything you could be, we could-
I can read forward, the email I sent before had what, fourteen, fifteen different things on there?
It did, but it doesn't have what Ms. Rutz is talking about specifically.
I've got one specific. After, we were doing it before, but after that incident happened in Bacana County, I want to be very clear, people understood more from that flyer. So I put together an email that I can forward to you, and actually, I think I sent it out in a group forum once before, but, I mean, I even included the link, where they can click on the link and type in the person's name.
That'd be great.
But I can do that, so I can send that to you. Any other questions or ideas?
If not, Becky, thank you so much.
You are so welcome. I'll touch base with you, and if you all have any, anything you want to do, I'll do that, and I'll be just fine. All right, y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Next on the agenda is the Nuremberg Institute for Childcare Services. Do you have an update on that?
Mr. Rutz has that for you. Oh, and you have a, at your desk, a friend out, it's really just a one pager. And just a reminder, this goes back to the CARES Act funds, we're partnering with the schools to help provide daycare services for the essential employees. The school board is taking care of school employee children. But so this will be, you know, the nurses, the deputies, the folks that are out on the frontline. We have set up a plan, and I want to admit, I'm leaning heavily on the school board and Dr. Carter for the majority of the information. But we've set up a plan to house forty slots. It can be sixty kids because some kids may go Mondays and Thursdays, and some may go Tuesday and Friday, or, so it's, we're setting up forty slots, not to exceed twenty-five thousand a month. We've put out a hundred thousand dollars, actually a hundred and twenty thousand dollars aside, but just to, as a placeholder in the agreement, not to exceed the amount of the twenty-five thousand. Really- really comes back to about a hundred and twenty dollars, a hundred and thirty dollars a week. Um, I can't remember the exact math, but it's in that, it's in range. So it's not overly exorbitant. Um, the good news is what you get out of it is a very low ratio between this teacher-student ratio type deal. Like you get the mentoring, tutorship, tutoring, um, the, the website, or the internet availability and all that. Food, food, of course, the school's taking care of the food and the, and the internet. But what I'd like to recommend or request is, um, approval of the memorandum of understanding and authorization of, for me to, um, to execute, so that we can hit the ground running. I think the goal was to, um, to have this in place before the virtual ends, so that, um, once that, um, school starts, we have the, um, the, the childcare facility. And I'll say, they're, they're hosting it at the, the Smith, um, I can't remember the name of the building. The, the, the building that's over in the desert part of the school board has. With Education Center. And, uh, the, the goal is, uh, hopefully, um, the program will be replicated on the western side of the county by the United Way funding, um, uh, after, after we get ours rolling. So, uh, be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
If there are any questions, we have a motion to approve. Do it a second. On favor. Thank you very much. Did the old business, um, make sure you have class of twenty-twenty pound donations?
Um, yeah, and, uh, really briefly, in your packet, I, I said that there was a, a letter enclosed in the document. I was wrong, uh, because you do have it at your desk. It's, it was a, an awkward, um, you can read it when we printed it, so, um, we'll just do it this way. Anyway, uh, so follow up on the, the prom discussion at the last meet, meeting. Um, Ta- Town of Sawville, Northwood High School, their prom coincidentally is Saturday night. Um, so the timing is, is, is really good. Uh, they have a letter that they put together. They're doing their prom outside in the, in the downtown square, uh, where the stage is. Um, I'm, I'm truly hoping that the, the weather holds out for them. It doesn't look too good yet right now, but, um, they do have, um, a need for, um, the, the four hundred dollar donation. So I think they're, they're good. Um, I was able to connect with some, um, parents who coordinated the Chill Howard High School prom that was held last month. That was funded by, um, private donations, um, fully funded. So what they've asked for is that the, the, the board, um, consider donating four hundred dollars to benefit last year's juniors, this current senior class. Because the prom that they had last month was for seniors only. The class of twenty-twenty, the juniors of twenty-twenty were not involved unless they had a date, I guess. But, um, so they asked that the, the funds be provided to the, um, Chill Howard High School, um, with the note to, um, to benefit the, the current class of twenty-one, um, um, prom of, of however they end up doing it this year.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve?
I would say first.
Second.
Okay, on favor. Thank you very much for all that information, and I'm glad that we're able to do it for these, um, these schools and these seniors. Next is a report from our county minister and staff.
I don't really have much to report tonight. Um, we did file the petition to appoint the members to the B Z A. That you guys appointed a long time ago, uh, and fell off our, our list. Uh, so that got filed with court this afternoon before I came to the meeting. Though, all three of those are being reappointed, so they serve until their appointment. Their, the person replacing them is appointed, so they've all been appointed. And any action they may have taken is fine. Um, but we are getting that order, hopefully beginning sometime this week, um, to reappoint those.
Good.
Uh, but that's all I have to report right now.
Okay, thank you, Scott. But next is a report from the county minister and staff.
This is kind of new. What I wanted to do is previously you would add something, you know, additional agenda items or something that pops up. I wanted to use this, um, for staff and for, go ahead and, and talk about anything that pops up. So in, at your desk, you have a memo from me that has four items to talk about. One, we've already, we've already stated, you know, uh, you should, you, I think you know that we have a, um, a full-time emergency management coordinator hired, Curtis Crawford. Uh, he currently does that position for Wiff County. Um, he's a resident of, of Sawville, so he's coming home. And, um, everyone that I've talked to at Wiff County, um, you know what's good? When they, when they start, um, uh, talking about how they hate to lose an employee, is they're quiet. You know, it started not quiet, but it, it, it's, uh, several days, I've heard a lot of folks that have talked about how they hate to lose them in Wiff County. So I'm, I'm getting more and more excited. He'll be starting October first, um, hit the ground running for the EMS and COVID and anything else that, that, um, that pops up. Um, a second item, you may remember a week or two ago, you received an email from Herbie Clay, um, requesting consideration for a Day of Unity. Um, I want to, to do some more research. I did want to have it on the agenda, just to, to, so you know that I'm, I'm working on it. But I, there's, there's, I think this is a much larger, um, issue that, that needs some, some focus. Uh, so, and, and we'll have this as an agenda item, uh, in, in the future, a future, uh, board meeting. Uh, third thing is, every year, the Daughters of American Revolution asks the county to provide a Constitutional Week proclamation. Um, they have requested, um, that the, the chair and, and I both signed the proclamation this year as representatives of Smith County. So we have the, um, the draft one, and you have a copy of the, the draft in your, uh, attached to the memo. Um, the Constitutional Week will be September seventeenth through the twenty-third, with September seventeenth being the, um, show this Constitution Day. And finally, a request from the Commissioner of Revenue, um, every year, uh, relative to the enterprise zone, the Board of Supervisors is asked to exempt, um, certain properties from, um, real estate tax, taxes. It's basically a tax grant in essence. Um, this year, there are two properties that are, that are still on the list. One in year nine and one in year eight. Um, and there's, it's a nine-year program. So a total, um, of seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents would be, um, exonerated from, um, from taxes for the two properties. Uh, and you see, there's a, a summary letter from, um, uh, Mr., um, Mr. Richardson and, um, a, um, uh, copy of the action from last year, just for your, for your information, as well as a summary of the investment totals. Uh, so I'd recommend that one would actually facilitate action by the Board if, um, if you're with the current.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? For a second. On favor. The President Minister.
And that's all I have.
That concludes your statement. Thank you so much, Sean. These senior judges, supervisors are coming at times. How about your servant, Hoska?
Yes, Madam Chairman. As you well know, my representative on library board has resigned for work, and I have a nomination of Ms. Heather Colly. She is a fifteen-year schoolteacher at, uh, Northwood Middle. And she is to do some student teaching this spring. He was put off one spring because of the COVID. And she will have her master's degree in library.
Great, great.
And she'd be my nomination for that.
Great. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Great. On favor?
I'm sure my little stain from voting, because she is my daughter.
Right.
I was forced to do.
We know how daughters are, but I think she'll be a tremendous asset to that board.
Thank you very much, I'm very proud of her.
Yeah, thank her for offering to serve, we appreciate it.
She's very passionate about Sawville Library. She's took her son to his now eleven since he was a, a baby in diapers.
Right.
To that library, and she's thrilled to be part of it.
Well, I think she'll be a great asset to that board.
She'd rather go against it anyway.
So you can hear it, isn't it?
Thank you very much for y'all's consideration.
Um, beyond a doubt, thank you so much, Hoska. How about you, Mr. Sturgis?
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, we can talk about the day here. Uh, I read a hundred hotspots in Verizon the other day, uh, which we did a breakdown of students without internet service. Right now, a person doing junk drives two days a week and delivering them with our food services to, to their, to their house. However, in breaking down the students who do not have internet, approximately seventy-five to eighty percent of them actually live in cell, cell service areas, so the hotspots will work to develop an internet. So they should be here towards the, uh, around the twentieth of this month. Like everything else in technology, there's backup of different things, right? And I did get three hotspots in the days. So if the daycare starts before the, the internet is hooked up, we have, we have internet for the daycare also. So we have a, a backup plan. If the internet's not hooked up in time, we have a backup plan to go there, so. I'm proud to say, you know, um, you heard him talk, we, we deliver food to the houses. Where people face hardship, so we're delivering food. So we're doing as much as we possibly can to make everybody get through this crisis as much as we possibly can. So very proud of the school system.
Well, we certainly all appreciate all the efforts from the school system and the challenges they faced this year, and it's been very successful, so we'd be commended on all that. This has been quite a, a year to turn and juggle. Um, I would just like to say, I really appreciate that this county minister, they're running for the health department and for the hospitals to be here in the census. I think those were great, uh, people to have come and give us information very helpful, so I'd like to commend you all for all that you do for us, and, and thank you. Um, and to thank the board, too, obviously, so. That's all that I have. Mr. Atkins?
Everyone be safe till we meet again, is all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Atkins?
Uh, not being here on Mr. Sturgis' first meeting, I'm gonna welcome him to the boardroom. We've probably been working with you. Uh, also, I want to throw a shout out to the, a local law enforcement officers. We have Ryan here, sitting here. I want to thank you sincerely for the job you do for the county and citizens. Um, I also would like to echo the sentiment Ms. Ryan has conveyed for our county administrators. I think this was a very well put together package. I, I appreciate all your hard work and your staff and, and what you brought to us. Um, I also like the touch of the local clergy coming in and doing the, the, I've been telling the, the, the word of sth. It's not been a good.
Invitation.
Invitation, thank you. Uh, I'd like to see that practice continued and maybe spread the love around to the different denominations. Um, I think that was a nice touch.
Okay, uh, we've actually partnered with them, and it will have, it'll be a rotation down from, you know.
I think that's well done, thank you. Um, yes, I think that's all I can say for this episode.
I think Mr. Sturgis has one more thing.
Yeah, I want to say two things. Number one, I'd like to commend the Board of Supervisors and County Ministers' Office for their support of the school system. And number two, I also would like to commend our EMS services and our healthcare workers for the challenges they face every single day in, during this pandemic. And they, and I think in our county, they've really answered the chore and done a fantastic job.
Absolutely. Uh, we will have a continued meeting, um, on September twenty-fourth, if that's correct. And it will be at seven o'clock, so, are we gonna do it at five? Okay, so we'll have it at five o'clock on September twenty-fourth. And so then.